Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of March sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Tonight, we'll hear a couple of student presentations, both from the middle school and from the high school. And then we'll have some minutes we'll vote on. We'll continue our discussion on our school committee calendar. And then, um, we have our, talk about our enrollment data. We have beginning negotiations with the OEA. And then we have our technology status update with our new technology director, Katie On Phillips. And then a brief discussion regarding the budget. Then at the conclusion of this evening's regular scheduled meeting, we will be going into executive session. So, with our first item tonight, we'll ask for our student representative from the high school, Mr. Tyler McCarthy.
Um, to start off this, I'm gonna start off with student council. We just sent nineteen delegates, along with Mr. and Mrs. Spitz, to the state conference at Hyannis. That was last week, Wednesday through Friday. At that conference, the council was awarded the Gold Council of Excellence. Mr. Spitz has the parameters of what that means. I was told he was gonna read those at some point. Along with that award, one of our delegates, Junior Nicole Grady, won the T-shirt design contest for the entire conference. So, all the students from across the state that attended now have a T-shirt with her design on it. And coming up on Saturday, the student council is hosting an Easter event, open to the entire town. It will be from eight AM to twelve PM at the high school. Now, moving on to NHS, they are hosting the Mr. Oxford Pageant, that is this Friday, March twentieth, at six o'clock. Everyone in town is welcome to come and watch our boys strut their stuff. Spring sports started today. The schedules are going to appear online when we know about them. And we would love to have everybody come support our pirate teams. The grade ten students will be taking the ELA MCAS at the end of the month, so we are wishing them good luck for that. Mr. Wetstone was just awarded the Crystal Apple as the February OHS Teacher of the Month. The AP Science mock exams are next Saturday, and the AP English final Saturday sessions were last Saturday. So, AP is coming to a close very rapidly. The NJROTC unit just won the Mayo Award as the best color guard in the Saint Patrick's Day Parade. So, big congrats to them, along with their recent win of the tenth Drill League Championship in eleven years. It's a very good record that they have. And, final item is that, in case anybody is going to Hometown Bank, you will notice that several OHS art students have art pieces on display there. They're very impressive, and I encourage everyone to go check 'em out.
Thank you, Tyler. Next, representing the Oxford Middle School, we have Renee Dupont. Renee, welcome. Come forward, please.
Um, first, we're gonna talk about OMS's general happenings. The following were our Students of the Month for the month of February. Grade five, Brooklyn Jubert, Amber Lyons, Courtney Briggs, Jacob Caparilli, Dominic Portielli, and Julia Viola. Grade six, Leah Clifford, Kiara Kenosian, Sienna Barsis, Lee Tran, Sawyer McPherson, and Nicholas Mercier. Grade seven, Nicholas Garagios, Kyle Johnson, Sierra Marquette, Austin Reboli, Austin Oriel, and Kelsey Durant. Grade eight, Victoria Varney, Jordan Bartlett, Jacqueline Curving, Michael Borax, Sarah Carney, and Allison Limberg. Student council update, as of today, student council just completed a very successful fundraiser, raising close to six hundred dollars selling Valentine's Day candy grams. Proceeds will go to, to support student activities such as dances and Spirit Week. Spirit Week at OMS was a great success. We had an overall number of students and staff participating. The fifth grade enjoyed the wonderful karaoke ice cream social, and sixth, seventh, and eighth grade had a dance. Overall, it was a wonderful week. OMS theater updates. The theaters department is gearing up for the up-and-coming performance of Dear Edwina Junior. Performances will be on March twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth. On February seventh, students painted the backdrop for the play. The backdrop design winner was, of the set design contest, was Mackenzie Martin. Congratulations, Mackenzie. We hope that everyone will come and see our students perform in this wonderful middle school musical. Over one hundred students are involved. We have some very talented students at OMS. NJHS update as of today, twenty-five new seventh and eighth grade NJHS candidates will be introduced into NJHS Huguenot OMS chapter on Wednesday, June tenth. Introduction into the Oxford Middle School chapter of NJHS is based on five criteria: scholarship, leadership, services, citizenship, and character. Save the date. Also, NJHS students will be hosting an OMS movie night on February, April tenth. Fifth and sixth grade will be invited to the viewing of the movie from two-thirty to four-thirty, and seventh and eighth grade will be viewing the movie from seven to nine PM. Other updates as of today are, our MCAS update dates will change, have changed, and are April second for grades seven for ELA composition. April sixth and seventh, grades five and eight have reading comprehension. These dates, as well as May dates, have also been updated on our website and calendar.
Thank you, Renee. Very well done. Very good. Renee, can you tell us, um, in your experience of middle school, what's your favorite class over there?
Um, science with Mrs. Purnier.
You really like science, yeah. What other classes do you take now?
Um, I'm in ELA and Geography with Miss King, and I also have math with Miss Purnier, um, math assessments with Mrs. Looney, and STEM with Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Renee. You have some very good teachers, as we do with all students in middle school, and they've prepared you very well to represent your school tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Wonderful, Renee. Thanks again.
Okay.
All right, next item in business, we have a series of minutes. The first was being on from January the twelfth. And, meeting was called to order six thirty by myself, members of attendance, myself, Dan Coonan, member Sam Batar, and member Palomina Griffin. Entertained a motion to accept the minutes of January twelfth.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Corrections, omissions, errors, are we upset? We're good? Okay. Well, moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
And those, no. The record show three in affirmative and two abstentions. Minutes pass. Next was held on February the twelfth. Members in attendance with myself, Chairman Dan Coonan, Vice Chair Brenda Ennis, Mr. Batar, and Miss Griffin. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February the twelfth.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
I have a couple of items with these minutes. Under item F, field trips, I believe, and I, I could be wrong, but, um, I believe these are the minutes, uh, this was the field trip for the NJROTC in which you were the abstention. So, the minutes reflect that you made a motion to approve the trip, however, I don't believe you did make that motion, 'cause you had stepped away from the table.
Yes, I stepped away.
And turned the meeting over to Mrs. Ennis. If we could have that correction.
Sure.
And then, um, under committee members, or, let's see, section G, number five, just a slight correction here, under my section, it currently reads, Dr. Garso cautions students to be careful how they respond to his tweets. That was actually, um, Mr. Batar cautioned students to be careful how they respond to Dr. Garso's tweets. Just a minor correction.
And we have those corrections, and we'll hold these to the next set. Next will be February the twenty-third. And I call the meeting to order six oh-two, and appears everyone was present that evening. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes of February the twenty-third?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, corrections, errors, omissions?
Just a slight error. It's on page two of the minutes, or, it's on page three, Susan, it is, bottom paragraph.
We change that to Ms'. Okay, with that correction being noted, anything else? So, we can entertain, entertain a motion which we have to, this minutes with the corrections. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstentions, no's. The record show five in affirmative and minutes pass. In the next set, from March the second, I was absent. Vice Chair Ennis called the meeting to order. Also present was Mr. Spitz, Mr. Batar, and Miss Griffin. So, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March the second?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, corrections, omissions? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I shall abstain. With the record show four in affirmative, one abstention. Motion passes. And March the third, and I was, Chairman Coonan was present, as was Mr. Spitz, Mr. Batar, and Mrs. Griffin. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes of March the third?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Omissions, corrections, errors? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 With the record show four in affirmative, abstentions?
Abstain.
And one abstention, four in. The next item in business, let's go back to the calendar. We've had some time to look at this calendar, and basically, I'd like to see our focus tonight is come up with the vacation schedule and the start of schools. The superintendent has put two proposals in front of us, one being, and let me just check this to make sure, the start of school is...
Students reporting on the thirty-first.
The thirty-first. And the second option would be students reporting on the...
That is actually the same.
The same option.
The difference in the two calendars is just the vacation.
Is the vacation, okay.
One with a shorter February vacation, but the start dates are the same.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so, we've had some chance to look at this. I'd, um, and I just, my feeling on this, as we go through, I do, and I've talked to a lot of people went through, and I think with the shortness of the length of the summer where Labor Day does fall later, that I would like to see is, as Dr. Garso put it, to the thirty-first. And I am in total favor of shortening up to February vacation. So, in shortening up to February vacation, it would be have the President's Day being the fifteenth, and the sixteenth off. I don't know how the members feel, but I will be looking for a motion and try and move forward with this, with this item this evening.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent with the shorter February vacation.
I have motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Spitz. Discussion.
I'd like to, I would just like to see February vacations personally stay. I know I brought up in the past the half-days, and maybe we could be creative with moving them, and I know that that would be something that would have to be discussed and negotiated upon, but, um, you know, it could be creatively placed in a way where, maybe the teachers are in the session during, you know, February break or something like that, and the students might have that day off or something along those lines, and we could kinda give the kids their break, but the teachers their professional development at a time that might be conducive.
I hear it, okay. Mr. Batar?
Yeah, I choose, um, I'm not in favor of shortening February vacation. I think that, um, you know, we're beginning on three days. Um, and I think, I personally feel like with winter upon us in February, a lot of people need that break, and I personally will not be supporting shortening February vacation.
Thank you, Ms. Batar. Anyone else? That being said, I'll call a roll call vote on this. And, um, I'll go, Mr. Spitz?
I vote yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Batar?
No.
And I'll vote yes. The record show three in affirmative and two against it, and the start of school will be the thirty-first with the shortened calendar. And also, as part of the discussion, that the members, the members' comments are duly noted, and as we, as we look at, the superintendent looks at professional development, that we'd like to see that incorporated within that time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Ennis.
Uh, we be able to post this calendar tomorrow?
I don't see why not.
Okay, 'cause people are looking for it, so that'd be great.
Thank you.
And if we could maybe put it on the Facebook page also, 'cause I know that's generating a lot of traffic, so, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll show the superintendent has a, since some good media outlets, we'll get this posted so people know they make their plans accordingly, which is huge when you, when you come to summer vacations, we want the kids available for a first day at school. Our new business this evening is our quarterly enrollment data, and I will turn that over to Dr. Garso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this report that's being provided to you for March two thousand and fifteen, is just an FYI, reporting on the current enrollments at our grade levels pre-K through twelve. It also reflects our auto district placements, our tuitions in, the coffee enrollments, and the numbers of those students either attending charter schools or exercising school choice. So, again, I provide this just for your information, and especially in light of the budget work that we're in, engaged in over the next couple of months. We wanna keep you as informed as we can with that.
Thank you, Dr. Garso. Questions? Comments? All right, so, let's move forward. Our next item is an update of negotiation with the Oxford Educated Association. And any action, and who will handle that this evening?
Primarily Mr. Matthew, but if I could just introduce the topic, Mr. Chairman.
Please, sir.
You, you will recall that at a previous meeting, the, the idea of contracting with a negotiator as we enter these discussions with the OEA was brought up, and the request was made that we researched that, and, and that was done, and Mr. Matthew can report on that tonight.
I believe the committee has received an email from Dr. Garso outlining both proposals, if you will, or information from the two different legal councils. One being Mr. Batar's request to reach out to the town council, and the second, obviously, school committee's own council. You saw some interesting observations there from school committee council on the process. Um, and I guess we're looking for a vote tonight as to what to do, as OEA negotiations are scheduled to pick up this Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. As I, as I saw those as well, too, I just saw the numbers. Historically, what has worked in the past, and again, as we're trying to save every dollar we can and put it into our budget to educate students, as you see these other expenses, and I know it's a very good, it was a very good idea, and I believe it could be warranted at a time, a time, or now when money's tight. I can't support that, Ms. Batar, and I, and really, this is your, your, you're asking for it, and I can see why you're asking for it, if you want to run the floor.
If I could, I just would like to say thank you to Dr. Garso and Mr. Matthew for doing the research. Once I read the email, I do agree that at this point in time, I think it would be cost prohibitive to utilize that service that the town is using as far as a negotiator's concerned. In the meantime, we have had our, you know, first meeting with the teachers' union, and in talking with Mrs. Ennis and other committee members the past, I think the process that we have in place works well, and so I'm, I'm happy with, you know, the not entertaining a negotiator at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Batar. Okay, so, item is dropped, there's no motion on the floor, and we'll move forward. And again, thank you for that research, and it's always nice to get just an idea of what it costs, you know? Sometimes in this business, it costs money to go out and get a, you can get a quote, and this one was a free quote, see what it was, and was this cost prohibitive, as Mr. Batar very eloquently pointed out. Okay. Um, next item in business, we have a presentation of technology status and updates and initiatives. And we welcome Mr. Katie On Phillips, please. I think we formally welcomed back the Oxford School Committee?
Yes.
In front of the board, we have, he's been in front of us before, he's been hired in Dr. Garso, what, in December?
All right, December.
End of December, started January fifth, so...
But a very familiar face around here behind the scenes. Now, we get some camera time for you, sir.
Oh, well, thank you, and thank you for having me. Well, I've been here for just about two and a half months, and in going around, walking the buildings and trying to get a sense for what's in Oxford, we had a discussion that may be good to come to you to just talk a little bit about what I've seen, based on my experience and what we, what's the plan moving forward. So, we do have a mission statement in place, this was done by my predecessors, just to provide up-to-date and user-friendly technology to students, parents, staff, and administration, which will augment teaching, learning, and data management, to implement and support technology that ultimately improves student performance and achievement in all academic areas. I think this is a good springboard for the work that we're gonna be doing as a technology team moving forward. So, today what I'm gonna talk about will be the staffing and support what we currently have in place, the current infrastructure, as I've done to walk through what I've seen, what could potentially be problems in the future, applications in software, just what are we using out there? The technology curriculum and how that's changed and may evolve in the future, strengths and challenges that I've seen, and also next steps, at least my plans for next steps. So, our technology team is very lean. We only have myself as Director of Technology, one data coordinator, and a one-point-five FTE, which means one person working full-time and one person working half-time for computer repair and support across the district. I don't think there's much room for anything else to go there, because it is a pretty, pretty lean, lean organization right now. Essentially, we manage, this is a pretty worthy page, and it's more informational for you, and we can post this online, too, if anyone cannot see the presentation here, but just to talk about our support structure. We basically have a help desk system where users email their problems in to tech support. We use this community-wide, so if parents are signing up, if students are having issues, if staff are having issues, which are primarily most for help desk tickets, then they all go to that one channel, and all four of the members of the team go in and pick up the tickets as they come in. So, we try to turn around things as quickly as possible, less, many times, less than an hour, as, I can't speak enough about the team that we have, because they'll be traveling across the district, hitting every building as soon as issues arise, so we really try to work on that as quickly as possible. Most of the problems we're having really stems from having old equipment. So, you'll see the problems are defective, defective parts, power supply failures, keyboard and mouse issues, things that, under, in a regular organization, we'd hope that we're not spending as much time trying to, to troubleshoot those problems, but, but based on what we are, we're working with, that's typically where most of our time is spent. I put this aside then, for the PARC Windows requirement, just knowing that we're going to be having some online testing, so this is just a guideline in terms of what we should be thinking about moving forward. You can see the different Windows-based systems. We're primarily Windows house, most of the computers in the buildings are Windows. You'll see that, and in the slide coming up, you'll see we have a lot of Windows XP machines. Windows XP base has been around for fourteen years, so, and they just ended the life of that. So, we're starting to upgrade to Windows Seven, and from this chart, you can see that it's mostly yes going across for all of Windows Seven. So, that would be the recommended specification moving forward for the computers in the district. For the, in terms of the configuration for memory processors and so on, most of the computers we, we have in place do meet the requirement, but the older Windows XP units are right at desk, right now. So, here's a breakdown of computers across the district. We have just a little bit under seven-hundred-and-fifty machines. Primarily at the high school, you'll see they have about two sixty-three, and the middle school having two seventy-three. Though, this, elementary buildings have a little bit of fewer machines, because they're primarily based in the library, and probably one lab, one extra lab there, and then we try to keep at least one computer in each room for the teachers. Ideally, we would have more, so we could have stations set up in these classes, but right now, we're not at that, at that level. We do have iPads across the district. Primarily, most of these were bought with grants or, or special funding, like Title One and so on, which is also granted, but mostly grants coming in. You can see there are a couple at the elementary schools, Mill and High School primarily have the chunk of the iPads, too. They typically store these in carts, so that can be checked out throughout the day, and they do get usage, they do get quite a bit of usage there. But then, the rest of the iPads are typically with the administrators, 'cause we use them for our teacher evaluation system. Please free to stop me as I go through, 'cause I know there is quite lengthy here. Printing and copying, we really have mostly, most of the printers in the district are for home use, essentially. There, we, we saw a lot of inkjet printers, and especially the elementary buildings, every room has an inkjet printer, and if you have an inkjet printer at home, you know expensive the ink for those can be. So, right now, we're going through doing a print evaluation with, with a few companies. They're coming in this week to make a proposal in terms of what a solution could possibly be moving forward, hopefully for a cost-saving. Ideally, I think we'd move to more of a network model where you have the large enterprise printer in, in central locations. That may take a little doing, especially politically, too, but, but it's mostly residential printers in the building that are meant for personal use and not for the scale that we're using in the schools.
Mrs. Ennis? Yes? Yes.
If I could just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
What are we spending in ink? About, I mean, I know that we've had these printers for quite some time, actually, so, how much are we spending in ink?
I'm not sure about that number, and if you would know, I'd...
Yeah, I actually don't know the number off the top of my head, but one of the aspects of these studies is to actually analyze our expenditures.
Okay.
And take a look at that, so I might be able to report back to the committee next time with some detailed information on that.
Has it gone up every year?
The cost of the toner generally hasn't, it's just, it's very expensive to begin with.
Right, right.
That's really the issue, as Mr. Phillips said, you know, these printers, I understood the concept, but it's a ninety-nine-dollar laser printer for a reason.
Yeah.
And that's because the toners cost a hundred-and-twenty dollars.
That's sad. Thank you. I look forward to seeing those numbers, though, as soon as you app them. Thank you.
Thank you. The next thing we're looking at are the interactive boards spread across the district. You'll remember in a couple of the budget presentations we've, we've put forward, we're trying to build up the numbers of some of those schools, because as you can see from this chart, there is quite a bit of inequity in, between the buildings. So, so Chafee, for example, has sixteen interactive boards compared to Barton that has three. So, you're, you're going from a building that has all that interactive capability to one that it's not, it's not quite as outfitted as that building. Mill School having a few more, and the high school who have their boards primarily from grants, too. But we'd love to see that built up across the district. Bandwidth, and this is something that, especially in the, the internet age, this is where we really are gonna have to be spending our money moving forward, I think. Everyone's trying to connect to the internet and trying to connect in a fast, in a fast way. From the numbers I have here, it seems like the, the district has been investing in bandwidth over the past couple of years, so in two thousand and eight, we're at eight megabits. So, it, just in terms of relative numbers, we can think about moving from eight to twenty to thirty to fifty, and now to one hundred. So, we've, we've been constantly going up for the past couple of years, and we will keep evaluating where we are, and if we'll need to increase that number again. The good thing is, the price has been going down for the most part. but hopefully we don't hit a plateau where, where, where we, we have to spend an exorbitant amount just to, just to increase our bandwidth. But we're, the 100 meg that we have right now has been sufficient.
And just to piggyback on that, the federal government recognizes that bandwidth and connectivity is one of the key areas as well for schools. And that's why they've modified the E-rate program to really focus on that. And, you know, for next year, that's really going to be the, the primary bulk of our money coming in, offsets to the internet access.
And if you just, just catch all this up here, is this through charter?
This is through charter, yes. So, we, we have a charter 100 meg by 100 meg fiber line, so it is fiber business class coming in. So, it's not your typical cable modem that sometimes dies and you have to unplug it, it's, it's actually pretty reliable.
And they're responsible for the service on this or do we service it ourselves?
There is some service, but we, what we do is we'll contract, we have some of the service contracted out to a local company out of Auburn. That's actually something I'm evaluating right now, how much service they're providing to us and hopefully less than that number.
Right, thank you. Anyone else? Please continue, sir.
Thank you. On the same vein of bandwidth, not only do we want to connect to internet, we want to connect to the internet in a wireless way. We want to, we want to connect all our devices. We have students in the building, they have their phones, their iPads, even a laptop with them. We want that, we want to utilize those, we want them to start connecting to our wireless. One problem noticing, we, we just don't have enough, it's called IP addresses, it's just your unique way to connect to the internet. And we, that's something we're looking to increase because if, if they, they have the technology with them, let's leverage that and start using that in the classroom. So, that's something we're looking to improve. And to do, the high school primarily would be worried, want to really ramp it up because those are students who have most of the devices. But as we, after we do the high school and middle school, then we'll start shifting to the elementary school. So, we'll be seeing proposals coming forward for that improvement because I think it's necessary.
Mr. Phillips, I just stopped you there.
Yeah.
This is one of the things I, I kind of don't understand.
Yes.
When we talk about bandwidth.
Yeah.
And so you hear complaints of like kids can't use their phones or so many kids will come in and they'll lock those up right away.
Right.
How does that affect like the iPad connectivity or laptops or stuff instead of someone getting in there and getting on the network right away so they have Facebook Twitter status and they're flying through it as opposed to weeding that out or to filter that to someone with an educational standpoint?
Right. That's, that's my challenge essentially in, in terms of making sure that, because it is a pie, right? If we have 100 meg and if one person is using it for streaming videos all day, then that makes less for, for everyone else who's trying to connect. So, that essentially is bandwidth, you are basically, you're limited by the amount of bandwidth you have. So, if one person eats it all up, then everybody, you're left with less for, for the other people. So, we're constantly trying to, to update our filters to make sure we're, we're getting rid of the Tumblr and, and all those, especially bandwidth-hungry programs. The YouTube using it for instructional purposes because videos typically use more bandwidth than text-based.
Right.
Text-based systems. For the students, what we want them to do is, is to have them connect, but because of our limitation right now, we can only have, that was their arbitrary number, 500 devices connected. If we have 400, 400 of those being student phones, which they do have, then all of a sudden, we can't connect our school iPads, we can't connect our school computers and then that becomes an issue. So, that's, that's the challenge right now.
So, is, is the challenge that it's, it's protected so the students with their phones can't get on that?
No, it's that our infrastructure is not, just not there. We, we have to build up our infrastructure so that we can allow the kids to, to get on and use that resource.
Okay, so that, that's a discussion that's going to be coming.
That's going to be coming forward, exactly, exactly, because we, the.
I was just going to say, in the meantime, I know we did speak about students being allowed to use their cellphones and whatnot.
Right.
Has there been a, you know, conversation in the district about kind of cutting back the cellphone use? So, there is enough bandwidth for students and teachers to be using iPads and technology that needs to be used in the classroom?
Bandwidth right now hasn't been an issue, it really comes down to this Wi-Fi problem with the IP addresses where we're running out of IP addresses for the kids. So, as we, if, if, as I said, 400 kids connect, then we, we don't, we can't connect anything else and we've run into some issues there.
Yeah, but are teachers having difficulty where their iPads are locked out because of the IP addresses?
Not as much, uh, yes, that, that happens, but not because of bandwidth, not.
Not, not bandwidth, but the addresses itself.
Yes.
And is that something that they're facing daily?
No, because we've, because we have restricted the amount of student access right now.
To phones?
Correct.
In the classroom?
Yep. So, the student, what happens is we have, if you, if you take your phone on and you look, if you walk to any, like a Barnes and Noble, you'll see you'll have networks that are broadcasting, you can connect to that Wi-Fi. So, we have three here in the high school, the kids only connect to one, one of those networks. And that, so essentially, we're limiting them to only that, that has limited amount of IP addresses. So, by, by doing that, then we free up the remaining IP addresses for, for the devices that we, we need, the student, the school-owned devices that we need to connect.
So, they don't have passwords and whatnot to get into the other?
Not, to get, not to get into the other network, correct.
Okay.
So, actually, that happened, I think sometime last year where students got a hold of the password and basically the network was, was, we were running into issues and we had to change the password. This was prior to me coming in.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
And can I ask another question? Does our district have like Arrow Hives and different things to help with the connectivity in classrooms or is that part of the infrastructure?
That's part of the infrastructure problem, so we're looking into, so Arrow Hive, if you don't know, they're basically a type of Wi-Fi provider. They're enterprise-level Wi-Fi where you can control the entire network using one system. We're, we actually have a, a bid out on, for E-rate right now to look into a solution like that. We may be able to get around it for this year, but at some point, we may have to go that route. We do have a, an enterprise, or it's not enterprise, but we have smaller units. There's a little white box over there behind me and that's typically what you'll see across the room. But it's this, this really small unit and it can only basically cover.
Right.
This room essentially like your home unit as opposed to an enterprise that you could use to, to, to the entire building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, while we're on this, I have another question with connectivity and why, and it may come up further in your presentation, with the, with the iPads, do we use Apple TV as well too?
There are a few Apple TVs.
So, do we have Apple TV in the building?
Um, not most places, there are a few projector setups that have an Apple TV attached to it, but it's, it's limited, not, not many places. But ideally, when you're dealing with the interactive boards, you'd also have the, the LCD projector and an Apple TV where you can connect the, the iPad to that, so.
Right, where you get instant, and the students can put right up, put their work on the board and.
Exactly.
For instruction purposes, okay, and that's something that we'll be looking at?
Yeah, definitely, definitely, definitely.
Thank you. Continue, please.
I'll just kind of go through, run through this real quickly, this is a list of all the, the software that we, we, not all, but most of the software that we use in the district. And these are typically the ones that we're supporting at a district level. You know, Windows XP, Windows 7, that's the operating system, Office, Google Apps, we'll talk more about that. School Fusion is our website, so if you hear anything about that, that's typically what they're talking about, School Fusion. iPass and, and also iParent, that's basically our suite that controls all our employee records, our student records, grades and so on. That's used more than anything else essentially. Map through NWA, that's what we use for the benchmark assessments. Study Island, similar thing where we use for, for assigning student work and, and tracking overtime. SEMS tracker for IEPs, 504, tracking ELL services, type to learn, especially for the younger kids, just learning those keyboard skills. We've been using that quite a bit. But if you have any questions about these, please ask me now, I'll just go through this because it is pretty worthy, but it just explains what these different software packages do. One thing we are encouraging are for parents to sign up for iParent. This is through iPass where if, when they log in, they can view their students' attendance record, their grades, their report cards, all the, the previous tests they've taken, like their MCAS scores, their MAP scores. We're all putting this information in iParent. And we're encouraging more and more people to please get out there and sign up. We just sent a letter home with, with the elementary school students to try and ramp the numbers up. You can see here, Chaffey and Barton, Chaffey's at 35% and Barton at 45% right now. But the high school and the middle school are over 80% of the parents are using the system, so that, that is really encouraging. The, the kids without accounts, for example, 108 kids at the middle school, 86 at the high school, we're really targeting those parents. We've been calling home, just trying to get them to sign up because we'll find this more useful. One thing we're hoping to do, or we're planning to do at the end of this year is to use iParent to send home report cards for all the kids. What, one problem we had especially at the end of the year was we were on the tight deadline to have all the grades in before the teachers, before the teachers leave and have them printed out so that we could give it to the kids before, before they walk out the building. By, by basically saying we're going to put everything in iParent, then parents, we can, we can push the, the last day to submit grades much later and then, and then we can publish the grades online to parents. Parents who don't have access, well, the office will be open so they can go in and get paper copies there. But with, based on the numbers we have, I think at over 80% and hoping to get quite a few more before the end of the school year. I think this could be very successful and also quite a bit of cost savings too in terms of not having to print out the 700 report cards that we'd have to for all those kids. We moved to Google Apps, this was all prior, prior to me. I've been a big proponent of Google Apps because it's, it just makes things so much easier in terms of everything being integrated all into one suite with the calendar functionality, with, with email of course, and the file sharing. And that's something that, that we've been using quite a bit here as the admin team and teachers are using. For example, the calendar, we use it to check out all the, all the equipment and technology equipment in the buildings. The next step is to, was to get all the students' Google Apps accounts, especially at the high school because that's when we really start seeing that collaboration, where, where students and teachers can start working on the same document. Teachers, students can be sharing documents with the stu, or students can be sharing documents with the teachers, they're all working collaboratively, collaboratively on, on the same thing. The Google website, everything just all integrated into one package. So, we're really trying to, to utilize this tool to the best of its ability, which, and, which is, it's really powerful. So, we'll be, we'll be pushing that out, hopefully by the start of next year, all high school students will have their own, own Google account. They'll have an email address through us, through OX, so it'll be student name at student dot OXBS dot org. So, they, they're, they'll be part of our system.
Katie, I just stopped you right there because that is, that's such thrilling news. It's incredibly news that the, our students are using what's expected in the industry and the workplace and making them college career-ready. And one of the complaints that has always been mine is it's, that the teacher wants a student to go home and to type a paper. Well, we don't know what they have, if they may have an older version. Now, we're giving them the technology available of here's the format and this, our school system is providing the format for them to use. I think that is such sound education and it's really taking a great step to close that digital divide that happens out there right now. It's wonderful, thank you, I congratulate you for that.
And this worked prior before me, so, but it's just continuing to me.
It's great news, it's, it's something we've been wanting to hear and now it's here come to fruition for hard work.
Good. So, technology curriculum, so especially with the online assessments coming, we, we realize that we really have to start ramping up the skills that the kids need for these assessments much earlier. So, to that effect, we, we hired a technology teacher last year at the elementary schools and we're, now we're working on the curriculum to make sure that we're focusing on things that not only preparing them to be better when they get to the middle school and high school, but also, you know, the, the basic skills that they'll need to take that third grade online test, can they drag and drop? You know, and those are little things that a younger, a younger student may not have thought about in, earlier, but now that these are things that are required, we have to make sure that our curriculum is in line with that. And we're also revising the middle school curriculum to make sure that those students are getting those skills that they need. And hopefully at some point, we'll be able to get some technology courses in the high school, again, for, for college and career readiness there. So, strengths, I mentioned this before, we have a, we have a strong technology team. I couldn't have walked into a better position really because the team that's in place has been very supportive and, and has been, it's lean but works really well, they get, they get everything done. And, and serve the need of the district, they really do. The improvements in the past few years, as I mentioned before, these, a lot of these things are things that I'm just building on because they've, they've been in place. So, I think the, the increase in bandwidth, the wireless access, the use of these online resources, the use of Google is definitely moving us in the right direction. And the elementary technology teacher, I think it's big because if you're not teaching technology to those younger kids, then they're going to be left behind as we move forward. A few challenges, aging infrastructure, auto warranty, network switches, poor wiring in some schools. Poor wiring just basically means you have wires hanging from, from the wall where somebody could just drag it and could take, possibly take on the entire network. So, these are things that we're, that we're, we're on the lookout for. The current wireless problem with IP addresses were, and, or even just access, we're definitely trying to address, address really soon. Aging computers and printers are taxing the time we spend in support, it would be much better if we were more proactive instead of being reactive. We're, we're constantly trying to fix things that are breaking as opposed to trying to set up for, for the future essentially. And just inequity between the buildings in terms of the technology access. We want to make sure that all kids in Oxford are getting the, the same across, across all the different buildings. Next steps, create more technology opportunities for students, whether it's through, whether it's through technology classes or just integrating that technology in, in the classroom. That's, that's work that, that I hope to do a lot of in terms of working with teachers. That, that to me is the most fun part in terms of here, here is a technology that's available, how do we use this to, to serve the kids? So, so that will be the goal moving forward, we want it, we have technology here, let's use it, let's use it to the best of its ability. Provide that PD, whether it's during the day, after school, whatever it takes to get those teachers using, using the technology we have. Upgrade the infrastructure, without that backend, it doesn't matter if we're, if we're buying the latest computers and we don't have the bandwidth to support it or we don't have the, the wireless to support it, then it's just going to sit in the back of the room and won't be used. So, we really have to focus in building up the infrastructure in the back so that, that we can support whatever technology we bring in in the future. And continue to reset, replace those, the aging equipment. We're, we're at a place now where over 50% of the computers are Windows XP, we need to, we, we have to get rid of that. It's a security threat, it really is, and, and it won't serve us well because many software patches are going to, are stopped or not being supported, they're not going to work with Windows XP. So, so it is time to start looking at a better solution. And I end with this quote because I think that what technology does for us is just provides a way for, for students in our buildings to learn a way that they know how to learn. They, they have these devices with them all the time, yes, let's utilize them, let's, let's use it to the best of what it's, what it's out there for.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Yeah.
Sputtar?
Thank you for the presentation, I have a number of questions. Regarding XP, are we running XP on any servers?
No, not on a service, no.
So, is there any, is there any concern about sensitive data being stored on any of the XP machines? Or are those basically being used for web apps?
There, there are a few, a few staff members who still use XP, so there, there, there is some issue with sensitivity. Most of what we have are stored in the cloud essentially on, in iPass, that's really our most secure or has the most private information that we'd, that we'd be worried about. But it is a concern that XP is still on so many machines. One thing I will say too, most of our servers are Windows 2003 and that support ends this coming June. So, that's also something we'll, we'll be looking to, to upgrade at some point too.
Are, most of our servers?
Here at a high school.
They're here at the high school, but are they, are they physical servers?
No, they're virtual, they're virtual, yeah.
Another thing that I think that falls into your realm is the registration process for new students coming into the district. I've gone through the process a couple of times and I find it to be quite cumbersome and repetitive. There's a lot of forms that you're filling out the same information over and over again. Is there anything on your roadmap to take a look at streamlining that registration process?
Not yet, but I'll definitely think about it after, based on you bringing it up here. I think one thing, and I, I actually find the system pretty efficient personally and the reason being that in the prior district, a person going, a parent going into register, for example, they would have to go to four different schools if they, or three different, depending on how many kids they had. I think what we've done is we've centralized the registration system, so it's all in one place and one person is taking care of it. The next thing is it also really makes our data a lot cleaner because that one person can go through and make sure that all of the, all the requirements are in place. While it may seem repetitive, a lot of it's coming from state requirements in terms of what we have to report out. So, for example, are you a military family, what special services do you need? These are all things that the forms are meant to capture. And while it may be repetitive for some, I think what happens is for some parents, we, we want to make sure that we, we capture all that information so we're reporting correctly when we need to.
I think from, from my perspective that, I want to say there are three or four forms that you would fill out online separately. that you would fill out online separately, and, and across those forms, just some repetition as far as, you know, student data, parent data, you know. If we could streamline into one online form that asks all of the data, I think that would be a little bit, you know, it would make it a little bit easier for the parents. Another thing that I brought up in the past, and I talked to the person who held your position prior to, was the school fusion site. I find, I don't know what your feeling is, but I find that it's not very friendly for mobile devices and tablets. And I know, you know, do you know if they have any plans on the horizon to do upgrades to that platform? So, I mean, people are accessing these things on mobile devices, so.
Yeah, completely agree. I find it cumbersome, too. We are looking at possibly other solutions, because it's also quite pricey. So, so we're looking at, the problem most times comes down to the conversion, because we do have, it, it will take a lot of time and a lot of manpower to move all the information that we currently have in school fusion over to whatever new system we have. They have not updated that site for the platform itself for a very long time, so hence why it's not mobile-ready, and it's, it's pretty clunky in many areas. But completely agree, but it, we're, I'm looking at that right now.
That's great news. The, the last thing that I have, and this is just my own little idiosyncrasy, but I, with our, the fact that we use Gmail, it's, it just really, I find it to be somewhat of an annoyance, that it always seems to place the person's email signature at the bottom of the thread when it's a reply or a forward. I know you can change that in your settings. Is there a way to change that across, like?
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't change across the board, but you, there is a, it's under Labs, Google Labs, and you have to go in. Yeah, that, that is a little annoying.
Well, there's a setting now. You don't have to download a lab.
Right, right. You can just go in, just write in your signature, write the signature and say, yes, correct, yep. So, yes, I agree, but it's not something we can change system-wise.
And you know, from an administrative standpoint.
No, I wish we could, yeah, agreed. And I, and I think there are many things like that, but sometimes the good thing with Google, too, is like if you keep telling them, they'll eventually change it, because that is, that was originally in a lab, and they moved it and integrated it into their system, so, yeah.
Well, thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ennis.
I was just curious, more than anything, about the needs of our special ed students. Some of them use devices to communicate. So, what I'd like to know from you, and if you don't have the information at hand tonight, are we servicing their needs when it comes to making sure that they have the proper type of device? And how many of them use a device to communicate?
Yeah, good question. That's actually something I'm working with Patricia Susan on right now. We're going through the lists. I have a meeting set up with the sped team tomorrow afternoon.
Oh, great.
Where I'll be going in and talking to them, trying to make, to look at their needs and figure out how we, as a technology team, can more support what they need.
And I'd also like to know how many bring a device from home, if we could, if we could do that. I've asked a few times for some information on, whether it be a Chromebook, or an iPad, or a tablet of some, some kind in lieu of textbooks.
Right.
I've never seen the breakdown of how much it would be, and I'm wondering what your thought is, coming in fresh, what your thought is on that, given that we have textbooks, and we have some students that, I mean, I, I think of the, the young lady that was just here carrying around a backpack that probably weighs more than her, you know, with these textbooks in it. So, I'm very curious, not only for that, because it's heavy and they're cumbersome, but to kind of get into the, you know, the daily use of whether it be a Chromebook or a tab, whatever it is, and being able to have updated information, so we're really current, instead of having, you know, history books that were, Bill Clinton was president, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, agreed.
Really, really make ourselves, like, in the moment, in the moment, especially of history and things like that. So, I, I'm curious as to what your thoughts are on, on having that, those technology devices in lieu of the heavy-duty book itself.
Can I just use one word? Agreed, completely agreed. That's where we need to, that's the direction we need to move. We are actually looking at that right now at the high school for the U.S. history replacement textbooks to possibly go with a program through Discovery. Pricing that out right now with some Chromebooks, and it, I think the number is about fifty thousand dollars, and that would be for six years, essentially. The license would run for six years for about two hundred and twenty kids, and then would purchase about a hundred and fifty Chromebooks and, and put them in carts across. The, the biggest thing we have to, and we talked about this earlier, we have to make sure the infrastructure in the backend can support those devices, and that's, that's what I'm working on right now, making sure the Wi-Fi will be, will be sufficient, making sure that the locations will be using it, will have access to the Wi-Fi, making sure the bandwidth will be sufficient. Because while the online tools are great, we also want to make sure what happens, which inevitably it does go down every now and then, what happens if, if we don't have access? What do the kids do? So, it's, it's, it's doing, it's, we're, we're, we're working on that. I think, I think it's, it's coming down pretty soon.
And I'm just, one last thing. If any of the school districts can get some buying power, I don't know if, if speaking with any of our neighbors that may be interested in doing the same thing, and then make a collaborative bid, you know, to, to the schools, because that, as we know, the more you get, the, the better the, the price can be. So, if, I don't know if any of that is an option to you.
Definitely, definitely.
Or, or something to look at, and of course, always grants.
And that was kind of the beauty about staying in this area, because while I worked in Northridge, I, I do basically know all the tech directors.
Yes, you do.
In the central mass region, so, so we can, we, we do have groups that meet frequently, and that stuff that we, that does come up in terms of, yep.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation also.
Thank you.
I would just like to take a second to thank Mr. Phillips for very comprehensive accounting of the current status of our technology. His plans going forward, you know, Kadian obviously is pursuing all opportunities to, to ensure that our students have twenty-first century tools in their hands, but he's always on the lookout for those efficiencies that are so dear to us. So, he's, he's trying to find ways to maximize dollars and make the most of the, the resources we have. And since coming here in July, I've only had the opportunity to hire two administrators, Mr. Tebow and Mr. Phillips, and I'm two for two.
Thank you, Dr. Garso. Yes, that's a good one right there. Okay. Again, Mr. Phillips, I thank you. I asked my questions during that, and, you know, and really for the comprehensive view to Dr. Garso's point, yes, that's been the highest turnover in your seat right now. The last three years, we've had three people, and they've been very competent, they've been very able, and I see that you've carried that very fine transition through. And I'm sure they left you some good notes of where the things were set up, and you figured it out, and it's a good team. And you said that, that they've, they assemble a good team, and they need a good leader, which I got, you know. Thank you very much, and we appreciate hearing back from you again, any more efficiencies that come up.
I'm sure I'll be back. Thank you so much.
Very good. Always welcome here.
Thanks, Kadian.
Thank you.
Our next item is correspondence. I have none. Out-of-state field trips, any field trips? Oh, do you have correspondence, sir?
No, actually, yeah.
Oh, the budget, thank you.
Mr. Matthew has some.
Yes, Mr., okay. Let's go, let's stop here and go back to the budget for fifteen sixteen, and we did meet with the selectmen last week, and then just before we get into that, we'll be meeting again on, we'll have a budget workshop on the twenty-third, so next Monday night, we'll come back for another budget, for a budget workshop down at the Central Office, Community Center Central Office.
Six o'clock?
At six o'clock, yes. Gearing towards our drop, our date, our public hearing is scheduled for the thirtieth, for March thirtieth, so we'll have a quick update tonight on where we stand, and then we'll be back into workshop again next week, and that is a public meeting as well.
Dr. Garso and I did go through the budget and identify some, a, a number of efficiencies, changes, recognizing a couple of announced retirements, one additional one that we can add on from the agenda here, and some changes, actually, that Mr. Phillips helped identify as he was doing, preparing this report and going through the IT technology inventory, and able to reduce some, some requests, able to substitute some requests for, of laptops for Chromebooks, knowing that they can continue to work even when not connected to the internet for what our folks need to do. So, this is an area where, this is a total of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of reductions that we feel can come off of our initial request without damaging or changing any of the plans that we had inside of there. And I think that's very important, because that gets our, our budget request down to about thirteen point two or so, thirteen point two and some change. And that starting point is going to be very important, based on the conversations that are going to be coming up the rest of this week and at the budget workshop next week in terms of what path the school committee is going to take the budget down. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the specific reductions here.
I have a, I guess it was part of one of my requests tonight, and I guess I'll just bring it up here now, as kind of a segue where I see, like, in, in kind of where it spurred this, when I did see your memo, in map testing Proctors. We, I guess we pay people to come into Proctor to the exam, the map testing. At some point, we really, as a committee, and this might be something over summer, is to look at our testing. Our kids are just so overtested, and there's going to be a point where, I know the MCAS, so if we go park wherever we go, and then you have the ELL testing, and the state recommend ones, but at some point with something like map testing, when the data shows, and I don't know when we stopped testing, is that if the kid's kind of at the highest level and we're not really changing much on it, why do we continue to test all children? That at some point our kids tested out, is that how much more can we get out of testing? Because, yeah, I understand testing will show their, I guess it's DIBELS, what it's used for, their literacy and numeracy scores, but at some point, if, if they're at a certain level, why should we continue to test? And then again, it's obviously rhetorical right now for some, for something the committee to look at, if the students showing growth and they're here all the time, things look good, why do we spend the money to continue to test these students? I don't know if it's a district requirement of where it goes from there. And you had a similar question?
Absolutely, but it, briefly, if I could just say that about DIBELS, or MAP, or any of these other formative assessments that we use, they, the real value in them is their predictive value in terms of how well kids are being prepared for college and career readiness. And one of the other measures that it aligns with, for example, is MCAS. And so, if, if, when we, when students take the MCAS, that's when we find out that they aren't on track to be successful, it's too late for us to do anything about it. So, we're trying to make sure that, and, and the point you, you made at the beginning, Mr. Corning, was that if, if, if we're not changing anything based on that data, you're absolutely right, and it is a waste of everybody's time. But the, the data that's generated by these formative assessments ought to continually report on where children are in their development, whether they're on track or above track, and allow us to provide them with the interventions and supports they need, or the enrichment activities that they can continue to grow with. So, it's a, it's a balancing act. We can, yeah, we can overtest, for sure. And if we, if we gave one test per year, and we didn't do anything with the information, we're overtesting.
Overtesting, certainly.
So, what we're trying to really do, and, and Mr. Phillips brings a lot of experience to this as well, and, and has assumed the leadership of the district data team, is ensure that any of the assessments that we deliver are generating information that is, in fact, actionable, and that does figure into the supports we provide to students, and informs our school improvement and district improvement efforts.
So, do we stop testing after MCAS then? Do, do those tests stop for those students?
We, the way MCAS, the way MAP works is typically three times per year, so it's early in the year, and that's one of the things that we want to do very early next year with the calendar, as I talked about last, a couple of meetings ago, is establish baselines. We do it again mid-year, I don't know if it was late December, was it December or January?
Sorry, January.
Second round, then, and then we have the third assessment, which does come after MCAS.
So, and, and I'm talking, I'm sorry, I'll rephrase the question. At the end, when does this whole testing cycle stop? When they're sophomores? After they've successfully completed the MCAS exam?
Correct, yes.
At this point, yes.
At this point. So, I mean, again, based on predictability and numbers, if you see students progressing right along and are at or above level, why do we continue to test them when we know that we've prepared these students for the test the best that we can? It'd get to be like the seventh, eighth grade. Is there a cutoff number, or are you going to say, they're, they're right on track? Yeah, they work on a little bit, a little bit here, a little bit here, but, but they're not grade deficient. They're right where they should be, or, or above. And I, and I would tend to agree that we probably have forty percent of our students at that level.
I'm not understanding you there. At what level?
At, at or above grade level that they're not on, on the radar that they're going to be, have trouble in MCAS because of their, their MAP scores, you said, are related to MCAS, so their MAP scores are up here.
Correct. And another thing to keep in mind, though, is that within educator evaluation system and district determined measures, which before I came on board and before Mr. Phillips, it was determined that, that MAP would inform our district determined measures for ed eval. So, even if students are, as you said, if forty percent of the students are showing that they're on track, what we're also looking at continuously is the impact that teachers are having on student growth from year to year to year. So, a teacher, for example, could have a classroom where a hundred percent of the students are on track to be successful in MCAS, but it's still incumbent upon that teacher to grow those, those students from where he or she inherits them in the fall to the spring. And we know that by looking at, say, grade three data, in some grade three classrooms, we have teachers who consistently, there's, the students in those classrooms consistently show high rates of growth, and in other classrooms, more flatlined, and frankly, in, in a few, the, the results are less encouraging. So, if we have students, if we have teachers, I should say, who consistently demonstrate high levels of growth for their students, those in front of them, what we need to figure out is how they're doing that, and, and support all teachers to do the same, so that we're basically bottling those, those great results. So, the data has a whole host of uses, it's really not just about student preparedness for MCAS, but it does have great predictive value, and that's, that's one of the ways we use it.
Right. I see that at the elementary levels, and my point is when you get to the, like, at the high school level, if the students in their freshman year, why are we continuing to, to do map testing when they're?
Understood.
When, when they're right there. And shouldn't it be, shouldn't that lesson be special?
And frankly, if we, if and when we do transition over to park, things like MAP will probably become redundant and, and not have to be done anymore, because park will feature formative assessments throughout the year in addition to those summative assessments that come towards the end of the year. So, we're kind of in a transition stage with that as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for the transition off of this.
Excellent questions.
I did pop a question on MCAS and on MAP, and where we go. Okay, any other questions on this, on this budget here? Mrs. Ennis.
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman, just make a couple of comments in regard to the joint meeting, or, I don't know, we can't call it really a joint meeting, but some of our discussion with the Board of Selectmen. We were, our budget was referred to being a black hole, and I have to say, I take great exception to that, because I'm going to defend the work of this committee, our superintendent and our business manager. Our budget is not a black hole. We spell out every line. I don't know if Dr. Garso has had anyone come into his office to want to discuss the budget. I have always offered my time to sit down, and I know other people on this committee have offered their time. No one, even a Board of Selectmen member, has ever said, yes, take us through it. So, in saying that our budget has a black hole, and it, all the money just goes into this hole, is absolutely irresponsible for anyone, I think, to say in this community about us. We worked this budget for months. It is the largest budget in town, and yes, it does have, the largest percent of our budget is our, is our staff and our teachers. It should be, it is everywhere like that. They are the most employees out of any department that we have. So, when you talk about the local aid discussion that we're, we're in the middle of, and the, I'd say it, and I've said it to our chairman, I think that we are in a crisis situation. I've never seen it hit this bad before that I can remember. I, I think one of the things that is lacking in our community is an understanding of what education means to this town, and what the numbers mean to this town, and how we spend tax dollars, in my opinion, is a very responsible way that we do it. We do not have the extras that many, many districts have. We don't have that. We do not have extra classes and things that can really challenge our kids. We do not have extra classes and things that can really challenge our kids that they should have. So, my, 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 well, for lack of a better word, I'm upset that this, this committee is taken and made like we are doing something improper. Or we are not forthwith with everything that we, we offer. So, in saying that, I just want people to know that, you know, when the, when the budget season is, is done and over with and we are stuck in, without certain amount of funds, yes, we're going to be in a black hole. But it's not going to be a black hole that we're wondering where the money is. It's going to be a black hole because we can't provide the proper education in this community. So, in saying that, you know, in my closing, I'll just say, I hope that the, some of the town leaders will maybe second, give their thoughts, some second thought before they speak and make it, you know, like it is us against them. I don't like that, I've never liked it. When I've gotten up at town floor, at town meeting floor, I've always said, I will never pit department against department. And if you ask me, that's what's happening here, and it's happening to the detriment of over eighteen hundred kids. So, that's all I have to say about it, but, you know, to say there's a black hole, I think, is the most ridiculous statement because our money is laid out line by line and we worked this budget for months. And look, no one is here to even ask questions. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's my rant for tonight.
I just want to tag on to those comments a little bit if I could. One of the things that I don't, that didn't come out at the meeting with the Selectmen that kind of bothered me a little bit is, we talked a lot about looking for efficiencies. Mr. Batar and I have been on the subcommittee with the budget. We've gone to at least three or four meetings per month for the last six months. We spent that time with other town departments, looking for efficiencies and ways that we could manage this budget effectively throughout this whole process. The committee has been fully involved. Every member of the committee has been fully involved in this process. We, I spent six years previously on the committee. I've never spent this much time on a budget, ever. Okay, so that's got to be said right out front. This budget is as clean as I've ever seen. It's as efficient as I've ever seen. And I don't like the, the use of that we need to start looking for efficiencies. Well, we've been doing that for six months. So, that really is not a place to start for us. We can't start looking for efficiencies because there are none. We've, we've already done all that. So, my whole point in that was really the efficiencies that bothered me the most because we've really done our diligence on this budget, and I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Mr. Spence. Mr. Batar?
Thank you. You know, it was a little disconcerting to me, to me as well because this being my first year on the school committee, I wasn't fully aware of the time and effort that was going to be involved on my part to be a, you know, quality contributing member of this committee. But I, you know, the financial aspect of it is so important that I, rightly so, I volunteered to be part of that subcommittee. And there have been weeks where I have attended meetings four nights a week away from my family to try and work on things to help this community and our schools be better. So, yeah, it did, it did bother me as well. It also bothered me when, you know, the chairman of the Selectmen had indicated that they never said that they were taking away the UGA money, when the email from the town manager, acting town manager at the time, did clearly indicate that that was the plan. And I believe that the Selectmen were copied on that email as well. I was, the only other thing I'll say about that meeting is I was so proud to be a member of this school committee because of the way that Dr. Garso and Chairman Coonan represented us at that meeting. I won't lie, there were a couple of times when I was jumping out of my skin because I wanted to get up there and say a word or two. But I think that you both did an outstanding job representing us in a way that did not pit us versus them. It was just a discussion on where we stand. And I hope that the community understands that the school committee is not asking for a proposition two and a half override. We're simply asking that we have a budget that represents, that will allow us to meet the needs of our students. And I think that we've identified ways in which we can do that within the levy limit and not asking for an override. And yes, there are some capital items that we may look to do, a debt exclusion. But, you know, a two and a half override would, in my humble opinion, be to the betterment of the town as a whole. Because I think there's a lot of things in this town that need to happen and can't happen because of the budget constraints. But I want to make it very clear that it's not, we're not asking for a large sum of money here. We're looking basically for status quo. And as Dr. Garso mentioned, I mean, level funding isn't really even level funding because we have contracted increases and there's increased costs of doing business. So, I just hope that, I hope that the community continues to support the schools. I thank you, thank you, thank you to the parents who came out to the Selectmen meeting to show their support for us and the school department. I know that some were disappointed that they didn't have an opportunity to speak, but I can tell you that their presence there, I think, really made an impact on the Selectmen. And I'm looking forward to our next steps and figuring out what we need to do to move forward. That's all I have to say about the meeting. I'd like to make a couple of comments about the memo about the budget reduction. So, I was ecstatic to see this. This is a rather large number, over three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. How much, I don't know if it's easily quantifiable, but I noticed a couple of these were items that I would call efficiencies, like the changing the hall call system. How much of these represent reductions in the way that we're currently doing business versus what we were asking for in the proposed budget?
Well, that's why I tried to put them into categories of retirements, reductions, substitutes, and changes. So, you know, between the reductions and the changes, I think that's really what you're looking for, Mr. Batar.
So, most of those reductions and changes are things that we, well, no, because some of these are new positions. That's why I was trying to understand, some of them were new positions in the proposed budget versus things that we're paying for today in the, in the current FY fifteen budget, correct?
Well, if I could, Mr. Batar, as an example, there was a request and there has been a request in, in recent years for an elementary coaching position, an elementary instructional coach. When we build a budget of need, we recognize that that's a position that we need. But given the current climate, if there are any things that we can pull out of there and say, this is just going to have to wait yet another year, this is an example of one of those things. The MAP testing proctors that the chairman mentioned earlier, we have played, we have paid proctors to come in and assist with the MAP testing. And you see the, the amount there. We're going to have to find another way to do this. We're going to have to make do without those positions. And so, these are already representative of cuts that are not anything that I would promote or are my recommendations. They're just, again, recognizing that in this current reality, we need to be as lean as we can possibly be, and if there are things we can put off to subsequent years, we, we're not excited about it, but we're willing to do it, and we're going to, we're going to continue to sharpen our pencils and, and try and work with everybody to make this happen.
Thank you. So, if I understand, you know, most of these are items that really represent things that we're taking off the table in our budget, I think, for the most part. What I did want to talk about was the substitutes. Do we foresee any issue with having a total of eight substitutes available in the district per day? Is that, are they full-time building substitutes?
That's been the model the last couple of years. The proposal for next year would be to go to an on-call basis. That's, you know, what a lot of districts do do. One of the changes and complications for the, for the upcoming years are actually providing these folks with health insurance under the Affordable Care Act. If they do work on a regular basis, then we do need to provide them health insurance. So, going to an on-call only as needed basis is one way of preventing that additional expense.
I think that's, I think that that's good. I mean, I'm sure that we're never happy when there's a reduction in staff, but I think that it makes fiscal sense. Thank you.
Who would handle the arrangements of that? You know, getting the substitutes each day? Would there be somebody that would have a position to manage that in the district?
The plan is to have that managed at the building levels, either through the principals themselves or their clerical staff.
Just one more thing I want to say. I've spent a lot of time walking around and collecting signatures the last few weeks. And the consistent conversation has been parents actually wanting to bring their kids back into this district. And what's most concerning to me is when we're talking about taking away funds and reducing some things here that, you know, probably should really stay in our budget, to say the least. We're putting our district again at a disadvantage where more people are going to look twice, you know, placing their kids in Oxford. And it upsets me, to be quite honest. I think we need the funding, to say the least. Everybody is putting forth their best effort. The teachers work incredibly hard here. And I feel like it's very unfair when we have such great administration being put in place and people that are trying to make the decisions to obviously do what's best for the kids. And I feel like there's a, kind of a backslide. And it's just upsetting to me because it's upsetting, most importantly, to the parents in the community that want to see their kids continue their education here. And I feel like they're being forced to kind of make some difficult situations when they have great uncertainty about our school systems and our school system. And I just, I think we need to reassure the parents, and I kind of put that out to the Selectmen and other parts of the community, that we need to rally around our schools and we need to make sure that it's the top priority so we can continue to make them better. And that's just how I'm feeling, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Coonan.
Thank you.
I do thank the sitting school committee that, I'll go on record as nine years of Selectmen and three years now on the school committee. This is the most time of any elected position I've been that we spend on the budget. Nine years of Selectmen, and we didn't go through our budget micromanagement just like we have here tonight. Every department coming in and not to justify the expense, but, and it wasn't a rationalization, it was the, the need, that what our students need to move forward. That, there's no extravagance in this. It's sound education principles, and I learned so much over the last few months going through these budget workshops. It's absolutely incredible, the discussions, to be sit across the table and to work with these great administrators and hear their ideas, hear their vision, and hear their passion for what Oxford, for what they want to bring to Oxford, what their teachers bring to Oxford. And I do thank Dr. Garso, Mr. Matthew for helping, for enabling this, for bringing it all together and to really help us turn the corner where we're going. When I left last Tuesday night, I was committed, and Dr. Garso was committed, that this conversation is not going to stop. Through the words, that it, that we get the Selectmen to realize, it's not our problem now, it's not a school problem, it's not us versus them, we're all in this together. And I am committed, Dr. Garso is committed, to continue this conversation. He, Dr. Garso has already continued into Town Hall, and I'll be, and tonight we'll be talking of some of our next steps. But I will be meeting with them, with the Selectmen, I do want to move this forward and continue this as, we begin to budget season. Now, we're in, past budget season, now we're into town meeting. We're, in two weeks, we have our public hearing. We have to know where we stand. Parents have to make a choice. We're telling the logical choice to stay with us, and we're asking that we should show them where our funding source is to prove that we can provide the best viable education, and we will continue to fight for this all the way up and down as long as it takes to make sure that no child gets left behind. Everyone's service is not level service, the service is what they need to grow as a district. And so, we're committed, I'm committed on that and committed to hearing the voices and for all the people in that room that wanted, that wanted to talk, and we know the message. We know what they need. And by talking to everyone in this committee, if you have this at home, if you're watching this at home and you have something that's on your mind, give one of us a call. It will get back, and you will be heard. If you felt you got shut out that night, you will be heard, let, let us know. And so, again, we will continue this at our next budget workshop next week, and then, that's all I have on that. Dr. Garso, very well?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Correspondents, field trips, we have none. Tonight, I informed the committee, we have two retirements pending for the end of the school year. Stephen Graham, please, from middle school, and Mrs. Patricia Susan was from OSPED department, will be retiring in the school year. Okay. I know we've all been working hard on budget. I know my committee, we haven't met yet for the memorial remembrances. Mrs. Ennis, I'm sure, has been caught up on budget. And Ms. Batar, I see your notes, and you've been a little bit backed up as well too. So, we'll move those, we'll withhold those. Dr. Garso, your report this evening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as has been referenced a number of times, on Tuesday of last week, the chair and I addressed the Board of Selectmen on the issues of the town's support for public education generally and its directives to the town manager to pull back the unrestricted government, unrestricted general government aid specifically. Again, the formula used, at least going back to two thousand and nine, when the town adopted the strategy of freeing itself from state support and instead relying solely on local taxes and fees to fund its budget. The formula has been that they would fund the schools at the minimum required by law and then supplement those funds by also providing the Oxford Public Schools with the UGA funds. In January, I was notified that this formula was being changed, that no monies, not UGA, not free cash, no other sources, were being added to the school operating budget for fiscal year sixteen. Obviously, this change resulting in the schools having a nearly two million dollar, two million dollars less to work with is reason for serious concern. In recent weeks, I've had multiple conversations and meetings with the town leaders and administrators, including a meeting with the heads of all departments just last Thursday, called and facilitated by Town Manager Paleya. As was made clear last Tuesday evening with the Selectmen, the town faces serious fiscal challenges in terms of providing resources to all departments and services to all residents. And as we've discussed this evening, the administration continues to examine every line of our proposed budget and has already made a number of significant reductions in materials and staffing requests for next year. While ours is and continues to be a budget of need, we recognize that obtaining all of what we need to improve our schools is not something that will likely happen next year. While we continue this work, as well as that of aggressively pursuing opportunities to be as efficient as possible with respect to how we allocate all of available resources, we know that barring a significant change in the local and state funding formulas, many further and painful cuts will be required. I do remain hopeful that by keeping the lines of communication open between the schools, the town administration, and the various departments themselves, and that by dealing with each other openly, honestly, and in the best interests of the larger community, we will together find solutions to these current challenges and be able to provide our students with the high-quality education that they deserve and that the taxpayers insist upon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Garso. Jump to business management, Mr. Matthew.
Just one last budget item. In meeting with the finance director last week, she did inform us that the transportation budget may very well end up being level funded to this year's levels. So, Mr. Batar's work with the Transportation Subcommittee becomes all the more important to firmly establish some policies and guidelines so that we can meet our obligation under state law. But that may be all that we're able to do. The bid is out, the bid will be open this Friday at Central Office. Feel free to come down, the bid opening is at two o'clock if anybody's in. down. The bid opening is at 2:00, if anybody's interested. So, we'll have information for the next school committee meeting in terms of the bus contract for the next three years. But this is the first time in a while the town has had to do this, and it obviously, I think, is...points to the fiscal constraints that all of the departments are under.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. No, no. Okay. From school committee members, Mr. Spitz.
Yes. I have on a lighter note.
Nice. Thank you.
I was lucky enough to be a chaperone for the student council meeting in Hyannis, which was last Wednesday through Friday. It's one that is put on by the MASC each year for the student council members of pretty much Massachusetts. It involves...there was 81 schools there. Oxford did fantastic, and I'm very, very proud of them. I just wanted to read this little blurb, if I could, so that everybody understands what it is. They received a gold award for the council. And basically, how the MASC comes up with these awards is it's called the Excellence Award Program. It's been designed to recognize and reward the achievements of outstanding student councils or student government organizations on our state association. This award program has been created. From the MASC Excellence Award Program is a way of providing encouragement and support, as well as provide standards of effective student leadership. The gold award actually stands for is presented to those student council programs that are deemed to be the most outstanding in our state association. The gold council is based on achieving over 46 points on the scoring rubric as determined by the judge and committee. And basically, that rubric is...they have a binder in a book that details everything they do during the course of the year, everything they do, every fundraiser, every charity organization they get involved in. I mean, there's a lot that goes into this. The student council consists of 41 of our students. Nineteen of them were chosen to go to the Cape, and it was the best group of kids I could have asked for. We actually have two parents right here, so I have to say good things.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz.
But no, they really were a great bunch of kids. They represented the town beautifully. I can't say enough good about them. And I just wanted to get the word out there that we do have a lot of good stuff going on in our schools as well. So, that's why I wanted to bring that up tonight. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. And thank you for you and Mr. Spitz for accompanying all the students and really leading them through.
It was our pleasure.
Because it could be, I mean, two hotels.
[laughing]
Wow, I don't know how you kept track of all the kids. We didn't lose anyone. That's good. They all came back better people. Wonderful. Okay. Mrs. Ennis?
I'm going to touch on some of what Mr. Spitz just shared, and I also thank you and Mrs. Spitz for being the chaperones. I know that the students that went have a great deal of respect for both of you, and I know one person, one young lady, who just loves you both very much. So, thank you for taking such good care of our kids. One of the things that Molly had come home and still is talking about is Mike Smith, who was an inspirational speaker. And I ask everyone who needs some inspiration to either YouTube search Mike Smith or go online and look him up. And he...his Twitter handle is @MikeSmithLive. This gentleman has such a story, and he left every student that was there with so much inspiration, but one of the big questions was, "What is your legacy?" And I think it really hit the kids, you know, at home, thinking, "Right, what is my legacy going to be?" So, in saying that, I think that even if your student is not a student council member, we all could use some inspiration. So, I'd just like to ask if we could please put his contacts on the website on the front page, and so families can kind of reach out to him. Molly did show me one of the gentlemen that was with Mike Smith, and I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, and we got to watch him on YouTube. It was just a five-minute quick film, but it was so unbelievable. And he's local. He's from Boston. So, it was just something I think that this is great for the kids. They are awesome kids. We do have a lot of good things, and this is, you know, 41 of really, really great students. So, thank you again for taking them, and I know a lot of the kids are looking forward to camp. Student council is an amazing organization in our schools. It's just amazing. So, that's all I have, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Ennis. Ms. Griffin?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Batar?
Thank you. One thing that I wanted to inquire about was on the earlier agenda item of the negotiations. We had had some discussion about inclusion of a municipal representative, and from what I understand, that decision actually lies with the chairman. Have you determined whether or not...because I think that was one of the things that we needed to wrap up for this evening.
Right.
Have you determined whether or not you'll be appointing someone to sit at the table with us, or just if they choose to exercise the vote and the contract comes before us for a vote?
At this stage, we're the brand-new town manager, and I feel that I'd rather have...with all due respect to him and learning his position there, in budget season, his time is probably best served in the front office, and that is something I would take in consideration again. But I believe Dr. Garso is...I'm not going to trust him from there, but I have the good faith that in sitting and negotiating, passing negotiations with him, he's a very keen negotiator. The homework is done, the i's and t's are all crossed, and I'm very happy to sit with Dr. Garso at this stage. But that doesn't reflect in the future. A town manager, I think it'd be great for a town manager that, like the outgoing town manager, or someone that's been in there for a while, that just to see what happens on the school side, where he's brand-new in the job. I think that'd be a little bit too much right now. He's still learning his own job, then to come back and hear our side as well, too. Because I think that on the town side, really should know, spend a day within Dr. Garso's shoes, are really what happens on running a school. It's not what people...there's so many different aspects to it that may happen. So...
And I believe that just because we're not exercising that option of letting them sit at the table with us, that they still...he still has the opportunity to appoint someone to vote on the contract when it comes before the full committee, if he so chooses. So, thank you for that.
Sure.
A parent had contacted me, I guess, a neighboring community had...and I think this actually...I don't know if this has to go through the board of selectmen or through us, but a neighboring community had put a non-binding question on their annual town election ballot, asking voters if they want local control of education standards, in this particular case, and if they want the legislature to reverse the Board of Ed's decision to adopt Common Core federal standards. I said I would bring it forward to the committee. I'm not sure. My personal opinion on non-binding resolutions is that they're non-binding, and it's, you know, it's purely ceremonial. But I don't know if other committee members have had feedback from, you know, community members. I would be interested in, you know, possibly putting something on the ballot about local control of education standards in this, you know, in the community. I think that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has, you know, continues to tax us with a lot of mandates that are unfunded, and it makes it difficult to run a quality district, you know, with fiscal constraints and all of the types of constraints. So, I don't know if that's something that...I know time is probably running out. I don't know if that's something we can entertain or not.
We'd really have to have some homework on that, too, and a full agenda item and policy agenda where members from the community could want to come in and speak about this. But as a school committee, we do have the option to request an article to be put on the warrant for town meeting.
Not on town meeting. This would be at the annual town election.
Annual town election, that would be the selectmen.
Okay.
And it's too late. And it is too late for that.
Okay.
Yeah. Because you have to get signatures. There's a signature process to put it on the ballot.
I thought that the selectmen could put it on the ballot, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. We can look into that.
Okay.
But for this election, that there's no questions on this election. We'd deal with the option, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
When will the revised FY16 budget be available on the website? I know we had some revisions that were presented tonight. Will we be putting that on the booklet?
Reflecting these revisions.
I know that there's been a lot of questions about our budget on Facebook, on the residents' forum, and I've been doing my best to answer them, as is Mrs. Ennis. And thank you both for your...Mr. Matthew and Dr. Garso, for helping me answer a couple of those questions. I can tell you that the questions that I got were very pointed about particular line items or areas of the schools, and the answers that were provided, they were received quite well. I mean, people don't...I don't fully understand our budget, although I'm getting there, you know, but there's a lot of intricacies to it. So, I encourage the public to continue to ask questions. If you have questions about our budget, as Mrs. Ennis said, and we'll do our best to answer those questions for you. One of the parents had stopped me after the selectmen's meeting and were talking about possible ways for the schools to gain some additional revenues. And I said that I would bring those forward to the committee for consideration at a future time. One of the recommendations was a full-day, five-days-a-week, year-round daycare slash pre-K program. I know we have a pre-K program. I believe it's four days or four half-days, but that could certainly help us generate additional revenues for private pay, especially if it's Also, fees. Nobody likes to talk about fees, but if we're talking about the possibility of an override, I think that we have to be sensitive to the fact that there are a lot of residents in town who don't have kids in the schools. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, you do have to look at the families with kids in the schools perhaps do need to bear some of the burden of those extras. And so, things that were mentioned to me were fees for transportation when not required under the law, which, according to Mr. Matthew's report, we may have to do anyways, athletic fees, and also use of our facilities. So, I don't know if there's a way that we can get some information on, you know, on those. I know that the transportation fee is something that the subcommittee is actually looking to bring forward to the school committee, but, you know, it's a hard thing to do to have fees. But we continue to give away a lot of things for free that we're not required to by law, and then we struggle to educate the kids so that they're ready for college and careers.
And then also add to that, there is a user fee for athletics.
Okay.
It's $100 for the first sport, then it's a sliding scale to 50, and I think the max might be $300, $500 a year per family. So, that's a pretty...we're about middle of the road. I mean, sometimes they're for over $1,000.
No, that's great.
Of sports. Yeah, but there is...
I didn't research it, and I wasn't aware.
Yeah, that's fine. No, that's fine. And then they're asking about the transportation fees, so that may be something to come in from your committee.
Yes.
And then there is...we do charge a building usage charge as well, correct?
We do.
Yes.
I know that some of the feedback that I got with regards to the use of the facilities is that there are certain organizations where we charge little or no fees because of their status as a nonprofit.
Nonprofit.
And sometimes, you know, we may...it may be wise to look at the fees that we're charging them, just to ensure that the fees are appropriate for the wear and tear to any facilities that they're using. Because even though they're a nonprofit, the district shouldn't have to bear, you know, bear those expenses.
In reference to that, through...from you, the superintendent, could we have the principals take a look at their monthly usage, and if there is any type of damage, what type of usage goes in their buildings, and to really give the committee an educated snapshot of what happens after hours in our buildings, which a lot of us don't know?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, we gave a great welcome to the middle schooler who came and did the report today. And part of me said, "Jeez, I don't think we do that for Tyler." So, Tyler does a great job. I just want to let the record show that as well. And then my last item was just a reminder to the community that this Wednesday, March 18th, is a full day. It was previously reported as a half-day, but it is now a full day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Batar. And I had my one about map testing, and Dr. Garso answered that. So, at this stage, open a floor, and no one hears. We will close the floor. Our next...Monday, March 30th, is our public hearing. Next week, we are at the central administration building on Maple Ave for a...hopefully, our final budget workshop leading up into this. Any further business from this board? No. Okay. We're going into executive session, and I'll read the notice. And please note that we will return just for the purposes of enjoyment only. A request we made to enter executive session, according to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and so the chair so declares. A further request we made to enter executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 2, for the purpose of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So, again, I'll enter a motion going to executive section under subsections 2 and 3 of Chapter 30A, Section 21.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Roll call vote. Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Batar?
Yes.
Mr. Conan, yes. Five in affirmative. We're now in executive session.